Morgan Lee, and I am filling in for Paul Robati tonight. I just wanted to say that when it comes to the rules of participation tonight, I think everyone is aware of these. I was just going to read them really quickly and add a couple of things. It says, "Anyone wishing to speak, please raise your hand. After recognition, address your comments to the chair. Comments must relate to the pending agenda item. By board rules, audience and board members can have up to two turns to speak on a topic. Those speaking should be concise and limit comments to one minute per turn. Those giving reports should limit their reports to three minutes or five minutes for presentations." I just wanted to add a note, and today what I'm going to try to do is time this and then give people a 15-second heads-up when we are nearing the end of your comment time. All right.
I'm going to do a roll call for the board members and the attendants. If you're here, state that you are here. I'm going to start with the people that I see in person, and I'll move on to online. We start with Dave Barber, Judy DeBelvis, Morgan Lee, Chris Salas, Louis Caldera, Angie Solomon,
Here.
Lindsay Alred.
Present.
Rookie Kim, is Rookie in? Mohamed Anwar Khandri, I don't see Mohamed. Later. And Michelle Ketchup. But we have four at seven.
All right, for the filling of vacancies on the board, do we have anyone? Oh. Have you already talked to Lyndon and checked the residency? All right, do you want to check your residency really first? So welcome. Could we move that to, can we do the public safety liaisons? All right, while we wait for this neighbor to go get the documents proving his residency, let's move over to hearing from Honolulu Fire Department.
Hello, Hakako. This is Stan Kimora. I'm from the Makali Fire Station. We're at the corner of University and Date, and thank you so much for having us. I hope you guys got our updated information sent out this afternoon. But I guess there are some previously requested information about training, upcoming training at 2599 Kapilani Boulevard. This is the future site of Kuile. Honolulu Fire Department has pivoted. We're not actually going to be training there at this time. So, but prior to conducting any trainings, HAT would notify the chair and the board as well as perform community outreach to the affected neighbors. So that was an update of previously requested information. And then I'll go into stats for the month. As far as fires, we had four structure fires, four nuisance fires, two cooking, and three activated alarms with no fire. For emergencies, there was a total of 103 medical emergencies, seven MVCs or motor vehicle collisions, and one hazardous material incident. And we just have a safety tip of the month, so this month is fire prevention month, actually. The National Fire Protection Association sponsors Fire Prevention Week, which is observed from October 4th, sorry, October 8th to the 14th. As a national campaign is promoted throughout the month of October, this year's theme is Cooking Safety Starts With You. We're asking to pay attention to your fire prevention. And did you know that cooking fires are the leading cause of home fires and home fire injuries? Unattended cooking is the leading cause of cooking fires and deaths. So what can you do? The good news is you can prevent most cooking fires and burns. Help keep your family safer with these simple but effective tips. Turn pot handles toward the back of the stove. Always keep a lid nearby when cooking. If a small grease fire starts, slide the lid over the pan and turn off the burner. Watch for what you heat. Set a timer to remind yourself that you are cooking. Have a kid and pet-free zone at least three feet around the stove in areas where hot food and drink are prepared. And that's all we have for the month. Can I answer any questions?
Do we have any questions here in the room? What about online? I think we're done with questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
All right, let's hear from HPD District 1.
Hello, good evening. Sorry Lieutenant Segusio couldn't be here tonight, so I'm filling in. My name is Brandon Shirishi. I'm the sergeant for the District 1 Community Policing Team. And just so to remind everybody, or if you didn't know, District 1 runs from Liliha to Punahou, and then from Punahou it turns into District 7. So stats for this month. Vehicle, motor vehicle thefts, one compared to two last month. Burglaries, two compared to zero. Thefts, five compared to 13 last month. Unauthorized entry into motor vehicle, four compared to four. Assaults, four compared to six last month. And sex assaults, graffiti and drug cases are zero. And our safety tip for this month has to do with driver safety and pedestrian safety as we get into the Halloween season. So safety tips for drivers, be alert for trick-or-treaters on Halloween. Slow down and continue to scan the road, the road in areas where they are likely to be or where limited sight distances are. On Halloween, there will likely be more pedestrians on the road and in places where they are not expected. Slower speed saves lives. Stay alert for pedestrians who may come out of, come out of or from behind parked cars or shrubbery. Stop and wait for them to pass. Don't look at your phone while driving. Your attention needs to always be on the road. And some tips for pedestrians. Walk on the sidewalk if one is available and use a crosswalk. And before Halloween festivities begin, create a buddy system to get each other home safely and prevent walking alone. And then with that, I guess I'll turn it over to District 7.
Let's take question for District 1 first.
Okay.
Anyone in the room that has questions? Yes, do you mind coming to the mic and introducing yourself?
Hi, my name's Tom Tomete. And on the Punahou Road, there's a lot of people that are turning straight onto H1 instead of going to Alexander to get onto H4. That needs to be stopped.
Okay, thank you. So you're talking about vehicles heading Maoka on Punahou, trying to get onto the freeway instead of making the right onto Alexander and coming back around?
There should be someone or camera to stop people from doing that.
Okay, we'll look into it. I know I'll let our patrol units to be aware of it. That area right there, that's actually the border of District 1 and 7. So anything going, I guess, up Maoka would be the District 7 side. Things coming down Makai toward the ocean would be District 1. But it does split our districts. We will look into it. And I will let the supervisors know from our side on District 1.
I had a question as well. I didn't know if it would be possible, and I guess this question is also for District 7, which I can respond to later. When you guys are giving the stats from month to month, would it be possible to also share those, how they compare with the average from last year?
We can look into it. I'll let Lieutenant Segusio know. And then I guess we can see, so you're looking at how do you compare year, year, I mean, I guess year-to-date? By, or just what it was?
Maybe like if you say like there were seven thefts last month compared with seven thefts on average in 2022?
Oh, okay. I can, I can pass a word along to Lieutenant Segusio and see, see if he can get that information and bring it to the next board meeting.
Thank you. All right, I think Daisy has her hand up.
Thank you. My question is, you covered the canal area by Makiki Canal area where the homeless like to entrap themselves. I know they moved from Kalakaua Avenue, and you can find them across the embankment on the side as underneath the homes. They're getting smarter and hiding underneath the, what do you call it, the shrubberies? And they're right underneath homes that's on the Kalakaua side before you get to Punahou. They're learning to evade the being swept away by going across. And there's a backman area where they can sit down and put their things there so you don't see them on Kalakaua Avenue anymore. But they're smart enough to go across and find themselves sheltered there. So you could also check that area also. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, no taken. Well, I always have a conversation with DFM. You're talking about inside of the stream area, right?
Yeah, you know, like they have an embarkment area where they can sit down like on the little ledge that's on the home side, the residential side of Jack-in-the-Box area.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, they're putting up tents or their equipment there now. So they're hidden from the public. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for District 1? All right, thank you very much for coming. You're from District 7.
I'm asking, I want to ask a question. Can you see my hand?
No, I did not see it, but go ahead, Joanne.
Anyway, this is for District 1 and District 7. So what happened, I think it was yesterday, there was that ACLU lawsuit case going on. So do you know what happened? Because that would make the homeless not be able to be in the parks or on the sidewalks. So do you know what happened at that lawsuit? There was a trial, I think, yesterday. Can you hear me?
I'm sorry, I'm not too sure what the outcome of was it. I'll, I'll look into it. We, I didn't hear anything from the city side either. But we'll try and look into it. I do not know.
That'll make a big difference in what you can do.
All right, I think we're out with this. So let's go to District 7.
Hi, good evening. Lieutenant Nishimura from District 7, East Honolulu. Joining me tonight is Sergeant Jacobs. The following are the statistics for the month of September 2023. Motor vehicle theft was 15 compared to 11. Burglary, five. Last month was 15. Theft, 14 compared to 24. Unauthorized entry into a motor vehicle were nine compared to eight. Total calls for service was 6,357. Our safety tip for the month is Halloween safety tips. Now first, for the children, to have costumes that are bright and easy to see and/or have a flashlight with them. Also, to please have a parent or responsible person accompany the children as they are trick-or-treating. Also, please be careful as you're crossing streets and intersections. And lastly, although tampering is rare, please check the treats that the children bring home so that we can keep them safe. And that's our report for the month. Thank you.
Anyone in the room have questions for District 7? All right, go ahead. Yep, please come to the mic and then introduce yourself.
Milton Del Valle. And one of the questions that I have is, are we going to have any police patrolling the area and to ensure that we have safety around our neighbor?
Yes, we have regular patrols. They're happening. I don't know particularly your area. But the Makali, we have a lot of officers that are patrolling both day and night.
Thank you. Hi, I just had the same question. If we could just, if it'd be possible to get some of these monthly stats compared with monthly, or average for 2022?
Yeah, we can look into that and see if we can compile those statistics. And also to follow up with the earlier question with regard to the ACLU lawsuit. Just prior to the meeting, I tried to look for any results, and I couldn't find any either, so we can follow up with that.
Thank you very much. Joanne, I still see your hand is raised. Do you want to ask about something else?
Yes, I want to ask Lieutenant Nishimura. So the stadium park is closed right now, right? And they're, I guess, fixing things up. What's going to prevent the homeless from breaking things again? I mean, they're fixing, that's what I heard. They're renovating the bathrooms and fixing up the park. That's why it's closed. But how do you prevent the homeless from destroying everything in the park again? Because then we'd be paying money again if we don't take care of the issues about them being in the park.
Yeah, we have regular patrols that are, that check the park and the bathroom areas. And, but as far as, we are not there 24 hours a day.
Exactly.
Yeah, so that, I mean, that's, and it's unknown when or if the respective people or suspects there are going to vandalize their property. But if any residents or park users see any type of suspicious activity, then they can of course call us, and then we'll respond.
Okay. But that doesn't really help. There's got to be stricter rules or something more enforced because it's just going in circles unless the law. So I'm hoping whatever happened with this ACLU, it works for you guys.
Okay, is there anyone else that has any other questions? All right, very much for coming. Great to have you guys.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Good evening as well. Let us pivot back to item number two for filling of vacancies on the board. Milton, do you want to come up and share a little bit about yourself?
I'm Milton Del Valle. I'm currently living here in Algarve Street, 1727. And I am currently in the military. I've been in the military for about 20 years already. I've been serving in another country and everyone over here as well. And I think it's time to give something to the community and my community as well. I want to be part of the board because I want to give something to this board. And if, if I can be of any help, that's what I'm here for as well. And I want to contribute and help in any other necessity that our community can, may have in order to be for our community. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone on the board that is interested in asking Milton any questions? I don't know if there's anyone whose hands are raised. Online, anyone here? I'd love to hear how long you have lived in this neighborhood.
Say it again?
How long have you lived in the neighborhood for?
I was for about a year already.
Cool. All right, are there any residents that would like to ask any questions? Anyone? I'll start with you in the room. All right, let's go to the screen. Joanne, go ahead.
I have a question. What do you think is the major problem? Since I've lived in the neighborhood 50 years, you lived in it once, one year. But I would like to ask you, what do you see as problems in our neighborhood? And what steps would you take to solve these problems?
Okay, well, one of the problems that I've seen so far is, as we already know, is the homeless. We got so many homeless that are breaking into our houses. And I am a father of two daughters, your young daughters and my wife. So I have to protect them somehow. So I think this is an issue that has been going on for a little bit already. We've been addressing with the, with the authorities already. And I believe we have to be more vigilant. And also, I also believe that as a community, we have to come together. Because it's a, it's a fight that is not just a one man or a woman try to fight against homeless that comes in and try to break into the house. I think we are, as a community, we have to become together and work together. So that way, we're talking about having, what's the word? They watch people. Neighborhood watch, but it's not just one person. We need everybody to collaborate and to, and to work together so that way we can watch for ourselves within each other. That's, that's what I have.
Thank you, Milton. Is there anyone on the board who would like to nominate Milton? All right. I guess we can have discussion time. Is there anything that anyone on the board wants to discuss here or on the screen? All right, we are going to go ahead and do the vote. You remind everyone how to do the vote.
So in order to vote, you need to state the person of, that you, that you want to fill in the vacancy. It doesn't matter if, just Milton, if you want to stay in the upstate. So I'll start alphabetically. Lindsay Alred.
Milton.
Dave Barber. Judy DeBelvis. Morgan Lee. Louis Caldera. Circle back to that one. Angie Solomon.
Milton.
Michelle Ketchup.
Milton.
Chris Salas. Rookie Kim. Spice Muhammad. Muhammad, are you here? Let's circle back to Louis Caldera. Seven of attention since he's not saying anything, but we still have seven, so congratulations. Welcome to the board.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thanks.
All right, we will take a very brief recess while Milton gets added to the board. So Milton, go ahead and come up here, and Lyndon will walk you through the stuff. All right, let us move on to our government administrative liaisons. The Board of Water is giving a presentation. And from what I heard from Lyndon, it's going to be a little bit longer? Monthly report. Okay.
So I'm Stephen from the Board of Water Supply. Just want to let your board and the members know that there were no main breaks in the month of September. And our big announcement is next month in September, we're going to be having Imagine a Day Without Water. Actually, October. It's October 21. It's from 10 to 2. It's going to be at the Freshwater State Recreation Area up in Wahihua. We're partnering up with 15 to 20 different city and state agencies. We have community organizations. We're going to have rain barrel workshops. You're going to have a chance to fish in the freshwater lake. We're going to have a zariscape plant craft. And really, just to sum it up, the whole concept is the One Water concept. So we hope you can be there October 21, that is Saturday, from 10 to 2 at the Freshwater State Recreation Area in Wahihua. And that is our report.
All right, I see a question from Laura.
Hi, good evening. I just have a question. The Department of Planning and Permitting says that they will not analyze the Kuile place on Kapilani until after the department has, planning and permitting has completed its survey. I would like to know that the water carrying capacity in the rest of our neighborhood is going to be good because I'm at probably the end of the water line, and I'd sure like to make sure that I have enough to turn on the water in my sinks and showers and everything. So I hope that the Board of Water Supply will have information to us.
Do you want to go ahead and respond?
Attorney General Manager for the Board of Water Supply. Good evening, everybody. Uh, wouldn't you know? Uh, yeah, what we do is, projects like that or any other projects, even a home, sometimes they'll ask us early on, project gets too far along if water is available. What we'll tell them is simply, water is available or not available at the present time. Say that final determination will be at the time they submit their building permits. Because we really can't evaluate what the object is unless we know what is exactly going to be built. So that time, we, if we have capacity, we'll provide sign-off on the water meter and say water is available, sign off on the building permit if they've satisfied all our requirements. We do evaluate the impact on the waters and our rules and regulations. There's a stipulation there in the rules and regs that we, we can provide service to new customers, but we want to make sure that existing customers, their service is protected.
Before I go to the screen, anyone else here in the room? All right. Okay, there is also going to be another Board of Water Supply presentation in a couple minutes, FYI. All right, let's move on to the mayor's rep.
Hello, everyone. Mike O'Keefe with the Department of Environmental Services and Mayor's Rep. No follow-up items or concerns from last meeting, but I do have a few updates from the mayor. First, mayor's stance on enforcing public welfare laws. The ACLU lawsuit seeks to prohibit the city from enforcing public welfare laws and take away the city's ability to enforce laws that protect and safeguard the public. The city disagrees with the ACLU's lawsuit. Homelessness is a complex and pressing issue that affects us all. So the mayor wants to assure everyone that the city is committed to addressing this issue with compassion and empathy and will focus on finding long-term solutions. Next item, Safe and Sound Waikiki Initiative marks its first year. On September 5, Mayor Blangiardi joined prosecutor, prosecuting attorney Steve Ahm, council chair Tommy Waters, and various other community and law enforcement leaders to celebrate the anniversary of this initiative. Onto affordable housing, a trio of affordable housing updates. September was a busy month when it, when it comes to the city's plan to help facilitate the creation of new affordable housing units. There are a few projects that the city's been working on. Parkway Village in Kapale, Kiha Pi Place in Kaileua, and Hale Waolu in Parkway Village in Kapele, Kihaapi Place in Kaileua, and Halei Waiolu in Chinatown. Also, um, safety tips for Fire Prevention Prevention Week. Um, Fire Prevention Week is from October 8th to October 13th, I think was mentioned earlier. But uh, wildland fire season is year-round in Hawaii and drought conditions have increased the threat of fires across our island home. Uh, visit uh, the HFD's Instagram and Facebook pages every day during Fire Prevention Week for tips. Lastly, Oahu's parking meters get upgraded. All across Oahu, the city's uh credit card-friendly on-street parking meters have been upgraded to better serve the public. These 4G connected parking meters uh were modernized to allow users to pay for parking safely, securely, and quickly. And by the end of the year, many of the coin-operated meters will be upgraded to the new systems as well. And that concludes my update for this week, but I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, is there anyone on the board? I'm going to start with this room.
Yes, I'd like to ask a question. I go by the fountain by Kapilani Park on Kalakaua quite often. And most of the time I see it not working, no water coming out. So I believe I called the Department of Parks and Recreation. I was told that they only operate it from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. They don't operate it in the daytime. And they said the reason why was to conserve water. The first thing comes to mind is that thing don't use any water. It just recirculates the same water, but they say, oh, but you get some overspray or an evaporation. And so that's why they do that. Just wonder, has there ever been a study made to see exactly how much water saved that it's really necessary? Nighttime is not the best time to run the fountain. Most people see it in the daytime. And maybe the two gentlemen from the water department might even have some input uh on that. But uh, I think I think if you got the fountain there, it should run 20 feet each day and into the late evening.
Yeah, thanks for that question. I'll, um, if if um, Ernie or anybody from the Board of Water Supply wants to comment, that's of course totally fine, but I'll follow up next next meeting too.
Uh, thank you, Ernie Lau, manager for the Board of Water Supply again. A good question and the reason, and I'll take responsibility. After the Red Hill field contamination occurred in November 2020, we had to shut down three wells, including Halava Shop. One of our largest wells serving urban Honolulu, including this area, supplying about 20% of our capacity. Because we shut down three wells, we're pumping other wells that also support the Honolulu Water System and the IAA Halava System. Uh, and we're pumping it harder to make up the fossil capacity. Because of that, we asked our customers and mahalo our customers for water conservation, went to water conservation. Also, we wanted to lead by example as government, water conservation. So we asked, and I just, I turned off the water fountain in front of the Board of Water Supply in Berritania Street. Asked the mayor to turn off the water fountain in front of Honolulu Halei, the net fishermen water fountain. Also, I approached the Department of Parks and Recreation to look at conserving water because parks is one of the largest city users of water. And they did that. They turned off um the fountain, but they also, they tracked their water use and they, I think they were being able to reduce their water use by about 15%. So I appreciate that, but sir, we'll take another look at that.
Just just from the fountain, they reduced by 15%.
Uh, 15% and fixing leaks and also monitoring when they irrigate their. Fountain is one component and when it's operating, especially during the day, there's wind loss, there's evaporation because it's hot. So they have to make up the water to what fountain supply.
So you think it is substantial loss?
I I think it makes a difference and what it also demonstrates something that people can see. To remind people, we all have to remember that our water resources are finite. Right now, we're 100% dependent on underground aquifers. That the water originates from rain falling on our water shipments on Ko'olau's land.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else on the board who has a comment? All right, let's move to community in person. Go ahead, Laura.
Mike, thank you very much. Um, I have two quick things. One, it's directed toward DTS. Um, Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos Tam has proposed a restricted vehicle parking permits as a pilot in Kalihii. But I am really emphasizing, and I hope you will too, that DTS prepares the way in all of Moili'i. We are already stretched to full capacity on all the streets and and the parks also. And we'd really like to make sure that there is a good parking uh regulatory, um, I don't know what you would call it, but any permitting process, I guess. That would be the first thing. The other question is, um, there is, uh, there was a, um, a letter to the editor in the newspaper. And uh, this person is presumably a transportation and land use planner. I'm not sure if he's with DPP or.
15 seconds.
Okay, okay. Well, very quickly, he has used disparaging language. And I just think that the um, uh, departments that he belongs to should be, um, give them sort of a refresher on how to write something very nice. He uses things anti-democratic, anti-poverty, uh, you know, I mean, it's 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 just something that is not acceptable, I think, in Hawaii. Thank you.
All right, go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that that um first question. Um, I I'm sorry, I was, I wonder if I can get some clarification on that. Um, I tried to type it down, restrictive vehicle parking permit project proposed by Councilmember Dos Santos Tam's office. And um, Laura, you said you wanted to make sure there was some something about appropriate appropriate permits issued. Sorry, I didn't catch the last part of that.
The pilot program in Kalihii that they're also turning right around and doing one for Moili'i. We're going to need it. We have all the big buildings and other projects coming up. And we're going to need it really quickly. We're already at full capacity on the streets. Thank you.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Karen.
Karen Lynn, um, I just will bring up the wall again. I took a picture on the way over, hoping that you might be here to show you. I'll email it to you. The wall on right over the bridge at McCully is still, it's getting worse. It's been years and years. I mean, it's a blight. Um, and I had a question about affordable housing. You mentioned three projects, but you didn't mention the former Tokai University. Is that not a city affordable housing project? If it is, how is that going along?
Yeah, thank you for that. It is one of the city's projects. Um. Um, I I think the three that I mentioned, um, there was, there was, uh, you know, significant activity in 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 um, in on those particular projects this past month. Um, the city actually has several more projects in the works. Um, but uh, but including the Tokai, the former Tokai University Building. So um, I can, I can get a, I can get an update on that, that particular project if you'd like for next month.
Get a status, that would be great. And then the final thing is, um, I will also email you, but a friend, a neighbor of mine asked me to address the McCully Bridge and the problems for pedestrians. Um, with, uh, she said she was almost decapitated by, in in mourning because there's uh, the guy line that goes from the, from the, from the pole. There's no, you know, there's no uh reflective tape, so I'll send, I'll send these things to you.
Thanks, Karen.
All right, as far as questions online, Joanne.
I have a question, the same question. Do you know the outcome of what happened with ACLU lawsuit yesterday?
I I don't. I don't, I don't think that there was an outcome per se. I think there were, um, it was the initial hearing and there was arguments made. Um, and I don't think there was a decision yet, but I can, I can get an update um for for next month.
You know, when it might come out? I mean, is there going to be another trial?
I I really don't know. I can, I can get a fuller update for next month.
Okay.
All right, I don't think we have any other questions. All right, thank you very much. Let us move on to UH, Elmer.
Hello, Chair, all of our members. Um, Elmer Kai, University of Oahu, Manoa. Um, I don't want to burst Board of Water Supplies bubble regarding the Waihea freshwater state event, but UH Manoa is also having an event on October 21st. It's called Discover Manoa. It is the first open house that we're having on campus. It's an ability for everyone to come and visit the campus. We will have tours, engage our faculty and staff, um, do some research and so on. So that is also the same time from 10 to 2 on the Manoa campus. Um, we will be opening up the whole campus, so just didn't want to break the water waters bubble, but we're home, we're closer to you guys. Um, the other thing, we also have two, two events that happen on campus over the last two months. Yesterday, we broke ground on the uh new um new graduate student housing facility, which is the old Noah site across from Fear Hall on Doe Street. Um, we are just, it's just a break, a problem breaking. There's still a lot of work that needs to be done. Um, there's no uh finite work that's being done right now, but I just want to let you know that. And then also, um, as many of you probably realize, the the new um RISE building, the Residence for Innovative Student Enterprise Building, or the former Atherton Spot on Metcalf and Doe, I believe, is open. We have over 400 students in residence there right now. Um, this particular building is unique because it is open to any UH student. It doesn't have to be only Manoa. So um, with that, it's it's one of the very unique situation. It is, although it is run by a a private entity, we provide the services because there are UH students. But outside of that, Chair, I'm open for any questions.
Thank you very much. Also, I walked past that building that you were just talking about the other day, the pink one, and it looks so beautiful. So nice job. All right, who on the board has questions? And in person, anyone on the screen? All right, in the room, go ahead, Laura.
Hi, good evening, Elmer. Elmer, I would just wanted to know, um, do you have an update on the Edward Brownlee musical instrument sculpture, the wall sculpture? It's by Orvis. Remember, I asked you some months ago if it had been reinstalled yet. And I really like to think that is, it's a, it's a lovely grouping of instruments as you come into the Orvis Auditorium.
Thank you for my question. Actually, that particular build, our work is is being preserved. Um, we haven't decided how they're going to renovate that whole area still. Um, so, yeah, it is, it is still maintained within the music department. Um, it hasn't, we haven't figured out to kind of make sure it stays in 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 process, but it will come back. We just don't know the process at time. It is.
Soon, I hope. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, me too.
All right, anyone else in person? All right, I think Rapal. Thank you, Elmer.
Thank you.
Let us move on to the governor's rep.
Evening, Chair and members. My name is Matt Devan from the Governor's Representative. Um, following up on um something that was asked by, I think, Laura Ruby last month. And uh, she had asked whether uh, the state has been talking to uh the federal government or the military about using some of their lands for affordable housing or Kahali projects. And so I looked, I took a look into that. Um, the short answer is no, they have not had those conversations. But the governor's office was actually very happy that you asked that question because it did give them some ideas. Um, and there is something called the Local Defense Community Cooperation Project that's run by the Department of Defense. Um, and that's a forum in which the state can um have conversations with the military about issues affecting our community. And they are going to bring up both the affordable housing and Kahali project, uh, the possibility of whether uh federal and military lands can be used uh for those kinds of things. So thank you very much, Laura. Um, and that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, anyone on the board? Are you, I don't know if there's anyone who's raising their hand online. I personally had a question, which is, can you just clarify how much longer is the state of emergency that was declared around affordable housing class? And if that's something that will get renewed? And also, um, I don't know if there were any goals set for that, but I'd love to hear what those goals were and how well we've accomplished this.
Sure, I'd be happy to look into the goals and the metrics that the governor's office has about that and report back next month. As far as the timeframe for the emergency proclamation, I believe the governor has said publicly that he's he's looking at no longer than one year. Um, so I don't know if that's still the case, but I'd be happy to report back from that.
Thank you. All right, any residents here? Any residents online? I think so. All right, thank you very much for coming. Okay, cool. Now we are going to hear part two from the Board of Water Supply.
Good evening, Vice Chair, the Board members, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mike Matsuo. I'm an administrator for the Board of Water Supply. Um, we've already met, uh, Steven Nordstrom, Department of Communications Office, and of course, our manager and chief engineer, Ernest Lau. Also here tonight is um, Water Works Controller, Bill Joseph Hooper. And I believe Barry Usugawa, who's head of our Water Resources Division, is present online. Okay, so um, as you can see up on the screen here, I hope everyone can see it, is our presentation. Uh, thank you for having us here today to discuss our upcoming proposed rates and charges for 2024 through 2028. Um, as you know, uh, it's very important that um, we be strong stewards of our water supply because as everyone has said, there's nowhere else to get water except on the island. Board of Water Supply delivers about 145 million gallons a day, 24/7, to about a million people on the island. And as you can see from this slide, it's quite an extensive system comprised of wells, reservoirs, booster pumps, 21,000 linear feet of pipeline and a lot of fire hydrants, and we serve 170 different customer. The Board of Water Supply, as you know, is semi-autonomous, meaning that we are funded solely by whatever we bring in from water rates. We don't get any funding from property taxes. And so whatever we get from selling water is what we use for of the water system. Um, and it's only for water. The water rate we're talking about tonight is only for water. Doesn't involve sewer that comes from a different um apartment altogether. The slide kind of shows you, well, the slide shows you actually where all the money goes. Um, about 27% of the monies raised from water sales goes towards what we call our capital improvement program, which is basically uh the the program that we do to develop sources, maintain our water lines and those kind of things. Um, we uh fund half of it through cash, the other half we use, we get loans. And so then we have uh payments on those interests. Um, a third goes to operation and maintenance. Um. And. Sorry, and the rest, uh, on the, another amount goes for employee salaries and benefits. And we, and we also pay uh about 12% for electricity. So over the last five years, from 2018 to 2023, uh, from the rates that we um obtained, we spent over three quarters of a billion dollars on capital improvement projects. And these are 500 different projects up that we've done, both design and construction. Well, as you know. I'm sorry. Well, unfortunately, uh, when COVID struck, things kind of changed for us. We saw a lot of change in our water use patterns. A lot of people stayed home, a lot of non-residential custom, or non-registered. A lot of non-residential customers, or non-regressive customers, like the commercial sector pretty much shut down. So water, water usage changed. So what happened was, the rates that we got, we were able to, we, we had about 12% in what we collected, but inflation went up 21%. So our purchasing power went down by about 8%. So what that did was it affected our part, our part costs. So as you can see on this graph, on the top line, even though we reduced our power usage, which is the purple line on the top, the energy cost index went up three times over the cost of those five years. And so what that did was it in, it in, increased our monthly cost for electricity. So in 2023, we spent $33 million on electricity, which was about 20% over what we had budgeted. And of course, Red Hill. Everyone kind of knows about Red Hill, what happened. Um, as Ernie mentioned, um, we had to shut down wells and we now need to uh, develop monitoring wells to watch what's going on in the aquifer and also develop new sources. And of course, the full impact to water quality and the supply, as well as to our operation and maintenance. And getting any cost recovery from the Navy is all kind of up there. And we don't know what we're going to get. So what this resulted in is we took strong actions. Um, we deferred the purchase of replacement vehicles and other equipment, other less um, uh, priority destruction projects or capital projects. And what we did was we held, that allowed us to to maintain our rate structure that we had already put in place. We didn't have to raise rates again. And we also didn't have to pass on any of the um, electricity costs to our customers. And of course, we, we kept our operation and maintenance budget as flat as possible. So setting water rates, as you can see by this slide here, is about striking a balance between the investments we must make so that we can operate an efficient water system versus making sure that it's affordable for everyone. So the increases we're proposing will raise about 550 million additional dollars. And we'll continue to fund our operations and maintenance, and will also give us a 1 billion in critical infrastructure investments. As you can see by this slide, this is how we kind of spend that money. The biggest uh, expenditure will be for wells, which is the yellow-orange band in the middle, and for pipelines, which is a brown band on the top. So these are the different customer classes of the Border Wasby: single-family residential, multi-unit residential, agriculture, non-residential, and non-potable and recycled. So basically, for single-family residential, this is about 90% of our customer base, and they use a little more than a third of the water that we produce. But they only pay for 95% of the cost to serve them. So the difference is made up by the non-residential, for the hotels, the shopping centers, parks, and so forth. If you look at, if you can see in the slides, a little hard to see, but that's the orange band, and they pay about 117% of the cost to serve them. So whatever we get from them, we use to uh, supplement the single-family residential agriculture and the non-potable recycled water. So this is our rate proposal. Um, we're going to start in January 1st of 2024, and it'll go for five and a half years. Uh, we're looking at rate increases of 10% on July 1st, uh, 10% on January 1st, excuse me, 2024, followed by another 10% increase on July 1st of 2024, and then 9%, 8 and 1/2%, 8 and 8 and 1/2%, 8% on each following July through 2028. All of our customer classes have all the same rate increase, and the changes may vary by tier. So let me explain that. So within our residential customer classes, all rates are tiered, meaning that each different um, usage, like 0 to 2,000 gallons, they pay a certain rate. The next one between 2, uh, 2,000 and 4, 6,000 gallons, they pay another rate. So and what this does is um, low water users will pay a lower water rate, which helps to support, uh, support our affordability of water. And we make the higher water users pay more, and this is to um, promote conservation. So our proposal is to limit the increase in our essential needs tier, which is basically that tier between 0 and 2,000 gallons to a 2 and 1/2% increase per year. And all our customers actually pay this low, below-cost rate for their first 2,000 gallons per month. As you can see here, this is how your rates will change over the five and a half year period. Um, the first one on the left is the low, the tier one, or the essential needs tier from 0 to 2,000 gallons. You'll see it'll go from $4.46 per 1,000 gallons to $5.17 per 1,000 gallons over the five and a half year period. And if you look at the far right, you see the tier four, which is the people who use more than 30,000 gallons. Uh, you'll see that theirs will go from $9.25 to $18.02. So again, this is the top 3% of single-family users, and the reason why we make it so high is we want to, we want them, we want to encourage them to conserve their water. And this table merely shows you what the rates will look like. Um, it's pretty much the same thing that was on the graph, it's just in a different format. So let me take you through how we do a calculated bill. So this is for a user who, a customer who uses 8,510 gallons. What we'll do is we'll round down to the nearest 1,000 gallons, in this case it'll be 8,000. And then, so for the first uh, 0 to 2,000 gallons, we charge them that rate there, which is $4.46, and then so forth and so forth. So for this person, they'll be charged the rate for 0 to 2,000 gallons, and the rate for 2,000 to 6,000 gallons, and the rate for 6,000 to 10,000 gallons. 30, I'm sorry, 30. Anyway, and also there's a, um, what we call um, a monthly customer charge, and I'll get into that next. But anyway, a person who uses 8,510 gallons of water would be paying $53.71 under current rate. So there's a monthly customer charge tacked on to all, all bills, and this is based on the meter size. And this is to cover the cost of meter reading and billing, meter maintenance and repair, and customer service. Most residential customers have small meters ranging between 5/8 inches to 3/4 inch. And those are on the lower side, but they will um, experience increases over the five and a half year period. So using the water bill calculation and the, the water rates that we just went over, um, shows that a, for uh, 2,000 gallons a month usage, which is about 10% of our single-family customers, the total bill would increase from $1.43 on January 2024, and in place I'm sorry. Yeah, we'll go up to oh, anyway, you know, it, it shows you why, I'm sorry. I have a hard time seeing this. Uh, the a, average single-family water user is 9,000 gallons per month, and this is about 60% of our customers. The average bill would rise about uh, from $60 to about $65, starting on January 1st, 2024. And thereafter, the increases range from $6.32 to $7.10. Um, if you can see the, the numbers on the bottom percent changes, it's a little lower than that 10, 10, 9, 8 and 1/2, 8 and 8 that I initially taught you. And the reason for that is the essential tier increases is creating uh, less of a increase on the rates overall. And of course, for the high-water user who, um, which is the top 3% of our single-family customers who use more than 35, 30,000 gallons, for a $35,000, $35,000 gallon per month bill, they're currently paying $229 on January 1st, 2024, and that will rise to, oh, I'm sorry, they're currently paying about $229, and on January 1st, that would rise to 200, almost $260, or about a 12.4% increase. And again, this is because the, the last tier, which is the, the highest tier, is increasing a lot more than the tiers below. And this shows you what would happen with the um, multi-unit residential rate, water rates. And they're going to increase similarly. The tiers are a little bit different for multi-unit residential water rates. Um, it's 0 to 2,000, 2,000 to 4,000, 4,000 to 10,000, and then more than 10,000. And this is another um, sample of what the multi-unit bills will look like. Um, if you kind of look at the first and third line, uh, the usage per dwelling unit in addition to meter size will drive the actual differences in the bill. And non-residential customers. So these are the guys who pay a lot more for their cost of service, and that's used to subsidize the other customers. And they'll pay basically $5.27 for 1,000 gallons. So they'll, they'll follow that schedule of 10%, 10%, 9, 8 and 1/2, 8 and 8% over the five and a half year period. So again, here are some sample bills to show you. Um, so for example, there's a hotel with a 6-inch meter, which uses about 1.5 million gallons a month, will pay $8,224 currently, and would see that go up to $14,000 in 2028. A large shopping center, which uses about, oh, close to 5 million gallons per month, is currently paying $26,000. And they'll see an increase of up to 43,000 in 2028. Of course, we will continue to um, charge our below-cost rates for agriculture and our recycled water customers, again, to um, to promote this use, of course, for the agriculture is to, so we can be food-sufficient on the island. And recycle water would be used to promote um, conserving our potable water supply for drinking purposes as opposed for irrigation, which is what recycled water tends to be. And of course, we'll continue to um, do our uh, existing meter fee and water system, fully charge waivers for affordable housing and homeless housing, um, which would, which to date has totaled about 2 and 1/2 million dollars. We're also considering new waivers for new farmers who connect to the water was by system for the first time. And we also are encouraging conservation. We currently offer different conservation rebates, as you can see on the left, left side. And then we're considering new uh, conservation programs, uh, you know, which we can see, all, all of these you can see on our website. On the new programs that we're considering, it would include outreach to top water users to try to get them to stop uh, to conserve water, and also focusing on our Kuna to um, ensure that they're taking advantage of all the available regions. So we began our technical analysis about 18 months ago, and we're now at the point of seeking your input on our draft proposal of water rates and charges. We'll be welcoming your input through mid-October and anticipate our board's formal consideration of the proposed changes in the October-November timeframe. So there are various ways to provide input, and we are asking that you provide it by October 15. Uh, you can see there, we, uh, our address and our email, or you can call. We're also on social media. We have our website. We're on Twitter and we're on Facebook. Um, I know I went through the presentation pretty quick and it was a little hard to see. So um, you can go to the Board of Water Supply at www.bordofwatersupply.com. And there's a, if you look at the top of the page, you'll see a, a button that says rates. So you can click on that and you'll be able to see the present. Um, thank you.
All right. We are going to see if there are any questions on the board.
Can you look at the uh, page 10, how to calculate your water bill? Just let me put that one back up.
Sorry, thank you.
Calculate your water. Yeah, that, that's the one. Okay, now let's say on tier three, 6,001 to 30,000, just $5.85. And then uh, tier four, more than 30,000 jumps up to a higher fee. So does that mean that at tier three, if you use 29,900, all your, the entire amount would be at 5.85? But if you used a couple hundred gallons more and went to 30,100, would your entire rate be for 9.25 or just the amount in excess of 30,000?
Just the
Um, no, the tiers are, um, for the, for the first 2,000 gallons, you pay the 2,000 gallon rate. For that, so, and, and so yes, if it jumps up, if you're in tier four, if you use 30,000 gallons, you're only paying the higher rate for that 1,000 gallons. Um, actually, at 30,000 gallons, you're not paying the higher rate. It's not until you're over, if you use 31,000 gallons, you're paying the higher rate for 1,000 gallons.
Okay, that makes more sense.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Elmer, go ahead.
All right, Chair, I, I, I see that you gave a lot of information here, uh, which is great. And I believe it's great for everyone over here, but uh, how can we um, condense some of this information so that we can pass it on to our neighbor? Because I believe our neighbors should know what's going on with our water. So is there any way that maybe later on, or, or any way that we, we can come, condense and highlight uh, the important things that you want to highlight over here, so the way our neighbors uh, is aware of what's happening with our water system?
Well, we do have the handout. I believe that you have a, you can, you know, we can always pass that out, give it to your neighbors. Um, yes, it is pretty dense, the presentation. Um, you know, we try to uh, condense it as much as possible, so it's easy to see. I think maybe the easiest way is for them to go maybe online to our website and see if they can pull down the uh, presentation. Then they'll have the information.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we also have the Water Matters Newsletter. I think this comes out quarterly. So it's sent to all, um, all people, all water users, or everybody who gets a bill. And so it kind of gives you the most current, some of the current topics that I'm, that we're displaying. Um, also, um, now, I, I know we, we used to have some tours, there's some, um, some presentations that we made, and we're happy to meet with different groups. So the, it, we provide presentations, um, just like the neighborhood board here. Um, so I think of uh, the paper, the materials we have on, is available for everyone to read. It does become a complicated topic, and so we try to condense it down as much as possible, but some people want more information and that, so it's hard to read.
I had a question, or two questions. One, do these rate changes affect everyone across the entire state? And second of all, um, what's going on as far as trying to get some of the money back from the military? Maybe you could expand more about that.
I answer your first question. It's only for the island of Oahu. The Border Wasby only deals with that. Every other island has their own water department that sets their own rates. As far as Red Hill, I'll turn it over to Ernie.
Uh, yeah, to follow up on that too, you know, each county, uh, to the counties, Kauai, Maui, Hawaii County, and Hono'ahu County have their own county water departments, and they have their own rates that they adopt that applies to their customers. So this would only be for Oahu BWS customers. Regarding the Navy, I mean, the, their whole Red Hill situation, we are tracking our costs and uh, in all options, open to pursue cost recovery. At this point, we haven't received a dollar from them, but we are, have let them know we are incurring costs and be ready when our request comes to them. We have asked our congressional delegation, actually, this was uh, uh, earlier this year, uh, to consider getting federal appropriations to help uh, cover some of our costs, especially in the area of replacement wells. Uh, and I think our request at the time was like 200 million, it's almost 200 million. But I want to be careful not, because we don't know what the final bill will look like. That's what we're going to be pursuing recovery from the military.
I had one more question as well, just regarding all these different classifications you have about how many gallons people you have about how many gallons people use before it goes up. Is one of the things that's happening, changing the different thresholds, um, that exist before you get into a different rate, since we didn't have like the previous thresholds to kind of compare to?
Uh, well, actually, this time, we're not proposing any change in the tiers on the usage. And, uh, when you say like that customer that uses eight thousand gallons, the first two thousand gallons would be billed at the rate for the essential needs here, which is the low rate, the low-cost rate. Uh, then the next, you know, then the six thousand to, um, two thousand one to six thousand gallons, the increment of usage that falls in that tier would be billed at that, you know, then if you get to the six thousand and one to thirty thousand gallons, it'll be that portion of your usage would be billed at that rate. Um, so it's, it's based on tiers, and, uh, our tiers are basically, you know, I took the approach, um, my, my kind of thoughts on this are, I want to empower our customers, especially our residential customers, to be able to control their bill. So what we did, we have two components to your water bill. You have the usage component based on your use of per thousand gallons, then also you have the customer charge, which is the fixed monthly charge. We deliberately designed the rates to keep the fixed monthly charge small, um, maybe about twenty percent of the charge, and the rest of the charges are based on how much water people use, because we really want to empower our customers to practice water conservation. We've expanded our rebate program to give them opportunities, also businesses, commercial rebates, about we, that's, that's kind of the philosophy we take. And this is the water portion of your water bill. Most customers get a bill that includes water charges and sewer charges. The sewer charges are under the Department of Environmental Services, and we don't control that, we just provide the service for billing for them. But this proposal is only for, uh, water portion of the bill.
Thanks. All right, Michelle?
Hi, thanks. Um, a couple of questions that I had. The first one is, uh, for this, uh, this proposal, I, I noticed that you're gathering feedback from communities. What's the overall approval process for the rate increase, or?
Uh, good question. So, uh, first of all, you know, to go to the board, it's a kind of a, a process that's two steps. First, the board, board asked us to go out with this rate proposal and seek input from our customers, and that's what we've been doing for now, since July. Then it'll go into October. Uh, the next, sorry, there's a helicopter passing by, so I'll, I'll just pause for a moment. So the next step is to go back to the board, and we plan to do that later this month in October, uh, to ask the board, uh, if they're are, are comfortable to pursue, uh, actually publishing a public notice for a public hearing to be held thir-, uh, next month in November. Um, so this, the board still has not made the decision, but next month, we would hold the public hearing, and we welcome input, uh, from our community. You can come in person, or you can, uh, appear virtually, or you can submit it in writing ahead of the meeting, uh, and that'll be shared with the board. Uh, and then the board in November, after conducting the public hearing, will decide if they, uh, feel, uh, comfortable adopting the rates, or if they feel that the rate should be modified and, and ask us to look at revisions to the proposal. So right now, it's a proposal, and we're seeking input. We've, uh, I think at the end of the day, we're going to be reaching out to maybe close to twenty neighborhood boards out of the, I think it's thirty-three neighborhood boards, or thirty-six neighborhood boards, thirty-three? Okay. Islandwide will be, uh, doing this outreach presentations, uh, and to twenty of the thirty-three neighborhood boards across the island. And any community association or organization that I'll be speaking to, like Rotary, I've spoken to Rotary Clubs. Last night, I spoke at a condominium association, um, one of the largest, uh, residential condominiums in Onoahu with over nine hundred units in the project. So we spent a, a couple hours going through the presentation and also answering questions.
Great, thank you. Uh, second question, just clarification on the, um, one item on one of the slides that you noted, lower rates for agriculture, and I wasn't sure if that was all agriculture, or was it referring only to those agriculture businesses that use recycled water? And then I guess, second part of that is, um, what qualifies as that agriculture category?
So it only, uh, for the ag water rates, which is about forty percent less than the cost of service to provide the water to those customers, so there's a big discount. And the idea there is to encourage diversified ag in our community. Uh, it only applies on the potable water portion. Uh, for the non-potable rates and the recycled water rates, which is recycled wastewater on the Ever Plain, um, I don't think, hey, we have any customers there currently using it for agriculture. They're using it for golf course irrigation, landscape irrigation, parks, highway greenbelts. Uh, so the, the other part of your question now, the, uh, what was the other part of your question? I'm sorry.
So, um, what does that, um, agriculture group consist of? Is it, you know, certain-sized businesses, or any type of ag?
Uh, it in, uh, it includes, uh, ag-related, uh, businesses or farmers. Actually, it can include, uh, flower growers, uh, nurse, nurseries, farmers growing food, or even ca-, uh, cattle, or livestock, cattle, or goats, or sheep. They could, if they qualify, and we verify that they actually qualify as an ag customer, we check that they have a general excise, excise tax license, um, and are actually doing farming. They have to renew it annually, uh, and we also, because we also say that when a farmer hooks up to our system, they need to have something called a backflow prevention device, because they may be doing things like applying fertilizer through their irrigation system. We don't want that to back up into the Port of Water Supply system and affect the community, so we go out on an annual basis to check that they're still in compliance. And at that time, we also see, are they actually doing agriculture?
Great, thank you. Very informative presentation, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Are there any community comments here in the room?
Sure.
I'm a resident currently, but I do, on behalf of the Water, Board of Water Supply in Palolo, but it's good to see you. I see you on the news a lot. And, um, um, I, because I come from the continuum of, uh, houselessness, currently receiving free water, right? Doing it very much, as I have also in other facilities. Um, I'm curious, like, the idea of how, how you guys are putting those who are doing and others, um, that's pretty nuts, because like, when you think of solar, solar farming or solar systems, you know, there's no way create our own water, unless people, are people allowed to, um, have their own wells on their property, if they own the property, and how far down do they actually own the property?
So any, anybody can drill a well on their property, uh, and, but the wells, uh, typically to get to the fresh groundwater, uh, water below in the aquifer, are usually hundreds of feet deep. So it's usually very quite expensive. Uh, they do need to apply for a well drilling permit, State of Hawaii Commission and Water Resource Management, and get that permit before they, she hire a contractor to drill a well.
Go ahead, if you mind saying your name as well.
Oh, I'm sorry. Aloha, everyone. I'm Stephen Mauser-Mavier. Um, I'm currently a resident, point five resident at a resi-, uh, Waikiki Health Center. Um, see, uh, the, the idea of water desalination, could that ever be an issue for the island per se? I, I was just learning about the other end of handling the water system, and I believe you're part of that, too, with, um, the landfills and the wastewater management through the Department of Environmental Folks. Um, yeah, desalination, how would that look like? And especially, I see the good work going on in the Onoahu. Cause I lived in a public housing property that was privatized and has a private public purpose, and they had like a issue, I guess, uh, that they figured out years later about leaky, I guess that takes a while sometimes to tell, and sometimes it takes a while to also assess how much that might have cost, and how much, um, as you're mentioning, looked like the military would be paying that, so however those processes work, um...
Fifteen seconds.
Um, desalination.
Thank you, uh, uh, thank you for that question. A lot was packed into this question. Uh, yes, we are looking at desalination. I mentioned earlier that right now, all our eggs in our one basket for, in terms of resources. All our resources right now are based on how much rain falls on our Maoko watersheds, and percolates down or seeps down to the forest volcanic rock to create underground aquifers. We're one hundred percent dependent on that resource. But with the uncertainty of what the future might bring, especially in terms of impact on rainfall patterns on our island, and remember, we're in an island in the middle of the Pacific Ocean, we can't drink saltwater. So what we're looking to do here, and it's a challenging project, is actually do a seawater desalination facility, a small one. But the idea there is, we need to look, you start diversifying our resource base. Right now, all our eggs are in one basket, and we're very susceptible to drought and rainfalls way below normal, especially what, if it occurs over multiple years. And we also see that we're also, our resources are below our feet, uh, in areas, especially in the, uh, upper part of the island, where the, uh, the aquifer is actually, there's no, what we call caprock or marine sediments over the aquifer, so whatever you put on the ground could eventually seep down into the water supply. We see that in central Oahu, where we have to treat for the last thirty, going on forty years, for pesticides used by large-scale agriculture, pineapple and sugar, even though they're gone away, we're still treating the water to make it safe to drink. So it's sus-, it's vulnerable, it's fragile, and it could, uh, the amount could change depending on the rainfall in the future. So we're moving, making the move towards seawater desal for the first time. I've been working on, uh, the cell issue for thirty years now.
All right, thank you so much to the Board of Water Supply for that presentation. Um, all right, go ahead. Say your name.
I'm Allison Peterson. Continuing on that, uh, subject you're talking about, our watersheds and how we are, uh, very dependent on that, we're very fortunate. Sorry, uh, and there were a lot of people that came and talked about the Manoa flood mitigation and all of that, and a lot of what we talked about was saving the Manoa watershed. Is the Board of Water Supply City working within the Albezia project, like, I'm getting that to, you know, save the watershed?
The answer is yes. Uh, we are members of the Ko'ola Mountains Watershed Partnership, and also the Wa'ani Mountain Watershed Partnerships. Uh, and we're working with the Oahu Invasive Species Committee, uh, even with, uh, JT, uh, for albezia removal. In the back of Manoa Valley, there is choke albezia, and you know, the thing that I always wonder about that, it grows very rapidly. That means it's probably using a lot of water to grow so rapidly, and it's also very fr-, weak, so with a heavy wind, bit storm, it just breaks and falls to the ground and could clog our streams and rivers. Uh, so one dream is that we can eradicate albezia in Manoa Valley, and it'll be a partnership between profits, government, and the private sector, and that's what the part partnerships are. The watersheds are our sponge to capture the rain that falls on our island, precious owa. So it's important we manage and care for that sponge, the watershed, because our lives depend upon it.
Thank you, everyone, for your questions. Thank you to the Board of Water Supply, and just a reminder that that date for feedback is October fifteenth, which is ten days away. All right, we are now going to hear a discussion on homeless programs and initiatives.
Vice Chair and Board, this is Anton Kruckey from the Department of Community Services. Uh, we have the Executive Director of Housing and Homeless on, online as well. Um, Denise, would you like to, uh, to start?
Aloha, good evening, everyone. My name is Denise Isari Matsubara. I'm the new Executive Director for the Office of Housing. Thank you for having Anton and I this evening. I know there was a question about, um, what we're doing for homeless and what we're doing for housing, so Anton's group, um, has programs that service the homeless, and our office is more the coordinating policy office for housing. So, um, Anton, I'm going to toss it back to you to start off with the homeless, and then I'll wrap it up with housing.
Okay, excellent, Executive Director, thank you. Um, I have a couple of charts, if I could share those with you. Okay, can you see those charts?
This one, so we'll try to keep it around five minutes.
Okay. So I, I pulled a chart here that gives you some data on, on an area that was, um, that was looked at for, it's the point in time count that they do once a year. Uh, we skipped one year after COVID, and, um, it, it looks at a, a series of, of things, people that are homeless, the different races, and then it also looks at, uh, over time, the unsheltered. And so in the region that, that we're in tonight and talking about, um, you, actually, homelessness and unsheltered homelessness has come down quite a bit since two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, when I, uh, came into office, and I was previously in Denise's job before I moved over to the Department of Community Services. And I'm glad to be back at this board. I've, I've been here three or four times, um, and, and talk to you. I, you know, it, it's, it's hard to feel that way, you know, when you drive by Pavaa Park, or, or Old Stadium, um, but if you drive by McCully Field, uh, it's a lot different than it was two years ago. So you can see the population has come down. Probably the biggest contributor to that is the, a program that we did with CARES Act money, and that was called Oahu Housing Now. And so most of the money that we get from HUD and, and such for our, um, homeless programs really focus on the most chronic homeless. And so what we tried to do was a, kind of did a market segmentation and looked at folks that wanted to be housed, right, that didn't want, that, that weren't resisting, um, the services that we were offering. And we were able, through that program, and it cost us about eleven million dollars, we were able to house over three hundred families and eight hundred and fifty individuals across the island. And I think that this particular area also experienced that, and that's the decrease that you see, a- and that's a good story. The tough part about that story is mo-, most of those individuals were, um, families, you know, single women with two children, three children, uh, a lot of families that, that wanted to be housed, they wanted to protect their children. So what we have is a higher concentration for the population that's out there, a higher concentration of single male males that, um, that don't really want services, if you will. We have a higher concentration of people that are experiencing substance abuse issues and challenges, and, uh, a bigger percentage, because the numbers lower, of people that are experiencing mental, uh, health issues. So, you know, what you'll see over the next year or so, you'll see programs coming out that will, uh, we'll continue to do the programs for families, and we'll continue to do all the programs we're doing, but at the same time, um, we, we, you'll see some new programs that will be trying to, uh, target, or not target, but address, uh, uh, situations for people that have substance abuse and, and mental health issues. So let's see if I can do this. Okay, so the, the strategy in the city for, um, for homeless. Now, there were questions earlier about the ACLU case, and, and that's really is about, um, about public welfare laws, and public welfare laws are, are really not part of our homeless strategy. That's really about managing the situation of, of all, all of our citizens. uh, in our public spaces. And I think the mayor is very public about that. Um, I, Mike talked about it in his presentation about our opposition to that case. Um, I know I testified, uh, yesterday, uh, in that case, uh, you'll, you'll probably see publicly whatever the results are. I don't know what they are. Um, and I don't get to see the other testifiers, but I was one of the five testifiers from the city. And in my testimony, I really spent most of my time on homeless issues and programs that we have. Uh, but I did, uh, finish that in, in my work at, around other cities that we've studied, I really do believe that um, supporting public welfare laws is in the best interest of all concerned, including homeless and the rest of our citizens. But basically, if you look at this chart where it says court of coordination of partnerships, when I came two years ago, two and a half years ago, we were trying to, uh, everybody said coordinate with the state better. And then, you know, we, we, we tried to do programs and, and what you're gonna see over the next two years is, is true partnerships with the state, where we're gonna announce, you know, relationships and partnerships over multiple years to address some of these issues. And I think that's kind of unfounded, uh, in this process. And, and I really think that there's a lot to be gained from that. Uh, Executive Director came over from the state. She's very, very Akamai about all those things. And, and we're just working as close as we can on these programs. But the less, if you break down a very complex set of issues with, on, with dealing with homeless, it really is about what can we do and how creative can we be on the left side of that chart? On how creative can we be to get somebody to make a decision to engage the system? So, you know, we, we, we have programs like Core, we have programs like Honu, Suda Fast is a, is a diversion. You know, we're trying to do, we have community outreach, uh, Court, which helps with Work Hawaii is a division that reports to me, Arrest Stop. There are a lot of different things, as creative as we can be to get somebody to be willing to engage the system. And then on the right side of the chart is what resources, we, we constantly review these set of resources. And you can see examples on the right side. What resources can we bring to service those decisions? And really, that's what we do. We look at ways that we can, we can work with individuals to get them to be willing to engage. Because if you're willing to engage, we could, we can, we can go down a path to help solve your houselessness or homelessness. Uh, but you have to be willing. And then we look at resources we can have. And we'll be bringing on, uh, resources, I think villages and powhollies were talked about. I know I'll be doing some of those, the state will be doing some of those. Um, at the same time, the one part of that presentation before I turn this over uh, to the Executive Director is, you know, when we do these programs and we do these situations, we need the community be, to be our partners. I mean, it's not just about, you know, your neighborhood watches, but you know, if we do a program and it's in your community, if, if you're gonna fight it, then you're telling us go solve this problem somewhere else. Don't solve it in my community. And, and, and we really need partnerships in the communities to be able to make these things happen, whether it's homeless programs, affordable housing, the whole, the whole spectrum of the kind of things we're trying to do that will help our citizens, uh, be in housing, being able to be fed and being able to, uh, have opportunities for funniness. So, um, that's a, a really short thing. I'd be glad to send these charts to, um, to the board for you guys to distribute. But with that, I, I'll turn it over to the Executive Director.
Thank you very much, Anton. I'm gonna attempt to share my screen. Okay, can everyone see that screen?
It just went away.
Okay, let's try again. Okay, can we see it now? Let's see. Can we see it now?
Yes.
Okay, so these, um, this is Waikiki Vista and, and really Anton and his team have been working hard on Waikiki Vista. So the, the primary answer to homelessness, of course, is permanent supportive housing. And these are works in progress. The former Tokai Building, and I, I believe Anton has presented, or Anton or Edward, his deputy Edward, has already presented on this project. But just as a refresher, uh, for Waikiki Vista, we're looking at permanent supportive housing and a family assistant assessment center for the Waikiki Vista. This is about a hundred eight units. But during the interim, we'll look at perhaps using the first four floors for this purpose. Another opportunity, uh, lies in Evilay Kapalama area. This is the Evilay Resource Center that was acquired by the city uh, several years ago. And the plan for it is to partner with the state, the Department of Health on a, uh, mental health stabilization center. So these are just some of the projects in the works. And on, on top of that, within that building, there's gonna be permanent supportive housing. At least that's the plan. I also wanted to, um, get back to you with the, the, so far, the progress on the ACL, uh, ACLU lawsuit. My understanding is there is no outcome yet. Uh, the parties have one month to draft, uh, proposed findings of fact and conclusions of law. Uh, and then the judge, from what I understand, will make a decision. So that's kind of the status on there. As far as housing goes, there are hundreds of low income housing tax credit, um, units that have been built and hundreds more in the pipeline. There are, um, several private public partnerships in the works. Two projects on non-city lands. There's, uh, just under three hundred units at Halemoiliili next to the old stadium park. Another three hundred units at Halava View Apartments, which is across from Aloha Stadium. Also, two hundred seventy-eight units at the Boladrome site on Eisenberg, which, uh, Stanford Car is doing and will break ground soon. It's pending permits. There's, uh, the city has also made lands available for affordable housing development. There's four leases that were issued. Uh, one was, uh, Halewileko, which is the old IAS Sugar Mill with a hundred forty units coming up on that. Um, it was mentioned earlier that Haleviolu, which is on River Street, will offer a hundred fifty-five units that that building is completed and in the process of leasing up. The largest low income housing tax credit project of four hundred units is coming up in Kapale on Kapale Parkway. And then there's another one hundred twenty-seven units at Kalemao Village, also by Stanford Car in West Lock. We, I'm also pleased to report that the city, um, has made a recent Kia, uh, acquisition of Kiapai Place in Kailua. And that will be home to another forty units of affordable housing rental units. That kind of concludes, um, my presentation, but I, I just want to conclude by saying affordable housing isn't affordable to build. It takes a lot of government subsidy. We're talking about, you know, over a hundred thousand dollars per unit, uh, in the way of government subsidy. And for permanent supportive housing, it requires even more because beyond just the one-time capital investment, it does require a continual stream of programmatic funds for the wraparound services and then operating and maintenance, um, funds. So there needs to be a long-term commitment. We're talking twenty years or so because it has to match the life of the building to be successful. But together with the state, um, we're hopeful that there will be progress as Anton mentioned in that area. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Anton and Denise. All right, questions from the board in the room?
Okay, these questions go for the first one. Can remember his name. Anton? Yes, I know that you, you talk about, um, getting engaged, uh, in the system. Uh, but the question, uh, to get engaged, uh, in the system is just for us or for the homeless? Uh, that's the first question. My second question is, I know you, you mentioned about being creative, uh, and, uh, and try to bring the resources. And I know that, that the government, they provide social services. So how can we have these personnel to come to our community and start engaging with the homeless that live around our community? Because we don't wanna, like, as the, as the resident of our community, I'm pretty sure we don't wanna engage straight with the homeless because some of the homeless, sometimes they get aggressive. And we wanna see how, uh, uh, these person of the worst with the social services that provide that, uh, uh, these, uh, the services to the, um, to the homeless, they can come to our community and start engaging with the homeless.
Okay, that's a very, very good question. I'll, I'll start at the end of your question, which is your personal engagement. You're, you're right, government doesn't really provide as many services as you may think. We do provide a lot. What we really provide is the funding for the service providers. Right? So we help them put together their programs and they're the ones who do the direct contact with the, with the folks that are, that they're providing service for. So, um, you know, the, in, in your area, it's kind of split between, um, IHS and, and Y Health Harm and Reduction. And those are the two people that, two organizations that do outreach. And so you, you can call either of those organizations or you can call me in my office and I can direct you. If you have a situation where you'd like outreach to occur, and then you'd like to watch that outreach, you can, you can do that. Um, a second comment I'd make about, uh, having homeless involved in the, in the solutions. Um, you know, the, the concept of the village, whether it be transitional housing or, or how the state's doing the powhollies are very much um, a self-monitored situation where you're bringing together folks that are homeless and they need a community plan, how they work with the community, their, how they're living. They're making, you know, they're, they're having to do some self-government in their, in their location. So they, they build a sense of community when we put together these, these villages. And that, building that sense of community and the responsibility that comes with it is part of the journey. And so, um, we really are trying to get, uh, homeless folks involved in the process, not just receiver of services. Um, but you know, even when they're receiving services, they have to be committed to, um, overcome their situation. I mean, they, they may have become homeless, you know, involuntarily, something may have happened to them, but now they're choosing to stay homeless. And so there has to be these moments, and these moments are tough moments. I know our core operation, our Crisis Outreach and Response and Engagement Group, you know, a lot of times when they get somebody to, to finally agree to take services, it's not the first time they visit them. It's not the second time. It's the third, fourth, fifth time where they've built a relationship with them. Finally, the person has a, that relationship, that engagement, right? They've built some trust and the person says, okay, I'll go with you. I mean, we need, uh, you know, when, when, when people move, they've just moved if they're, if they're on the streets. It, the solution really comes is when you, you provide somebody with a bed and beds of many kinds. Beds come as stabilization beds, beds come as treatment beds, beds come as trans- transitional housing. And then Denise was talking about permanent supportive housing, where we don't lose touch with the people. We continue to provide support there. And then eventually moving on to traditional housing. So, you know, we need many beds. And that's why I talk about analyzing the resources on the right. Are they matching the decisions that people are willing to make to engage the system?
Anyone else on the board? All right, let's move to comments here. I see a couple folks. Go ahead, Laura, and then feel free to ask your question.
Hi, very quickly, um, I had asked before, uh, the city and county should have identified all the remnant parcels in the, on the island of Oahu. Those were, those are perfect opportune locations for putting in additional housing. And I would suggest that there's two different kinds that we may be conflating the two. One of the tiny homes, like there's the, um, uh, state one at, um, Board of Health, which is for transitional people coming out of the, of Queens Hospital or something. But those are little baby houses, tiny houses. Big enough with a bed and a wheel and a, um, shopping cart or something. And then there's the others that have more little, um, family groups, whatever, and, and are together. And that, that, they've can form their own communities much easier. I'm just hoping, where have you identified all the remnant parcels? And how soon can some things be going up there, prefabs or whatever? Thank you.
Uh, the one you're talking about across from Queens is a medical respite. Um, Family Promise is the one delivering the service there. And, and, uh, it's really for people while they're, uh, healing. They, they couldn't stay in the, in the emergency room and then they were just going to the street. Now we can, we can have them be serviced here. So that's medical respite. Um, we have, we have different, uh, parcels. I have one that I'm working on in Wa'ani for, for fairly large village. And then I have another parcel that, uh, we're, we're working on in, in Wa'amanalo. I've got a downtown one. You know, until we, until we get them fully baked, I'm not really ready to announce them. But, um, as we do that in those communities, we'll work with the, with the neighborhood boards and let you know what we're doing before we do it and get your input. And, and hopefully with these, these projects that I'm trying to do, not, not as much the ones that Denise are doing, but the ones that I'm trying to do, take, very much take your engagement. And we want you to help solution it. We want you to understand how we're going to make it work in the community as best we can.
All right, I think we have some more folks here who would like to share.
My name is Brigitte. I live at the Marco Polo. I heard two terms tonight, um, that confused me a little bit. Transitional housing and low income housing. And since I live at the Marco Polo and I hear Tocca University, I am wondering, would that be a building where we pay rent, have a job, and it's just a lower rent that is affordable? Or would that be transitional housing? Like they have, um, near Young Street and people who live there, they hang out there. But I'm just, I'm just wondering about Tocca University, what is planned for that? What kind of, is it transitional housing? Is it, so, is it just, um, where people pay rent? And it's just lower rent than what the market? What is available on the market? I'm just wondering.
So in this property, you want me to take this, Denise?
Go ahead, Anton.
Okay, um, you know, in these properties, we have to maintain a certain, uh, rent. We, we analyze the rent in the, in the neighborhood. Now, some of the people may, you know, get subsidies. They may get vouchers to live in those units, but the rent is charged based on the community assessment. When I talk about transitional housing, I'm talking about villages that are, that are designed to bring somebody in that's not ready to, uh, be housed on their own or even housed in a way with people being around them, supporting them. They're just not there yet. There, there's a lot of, of, of the journey to be, um, to occur before they're ready for that. So these, these, these type of situations are two to three years. Uh, someone would be there and you're, you're doing, you know, you're, you're doing help, you're doing stabilization, you're, you're doing job training, you're, you know, a lot of different things. And so the transitional ones are really separate. And so when I, I really use that term more in terms of these villages I'm trying to build. Um, and, and so that's more for that. But in terms of, of the, uh, folks in Tokai University, we do an assessment of the, of the rent in the neighborhoods and, and that's sort of how we're gonna assess it. There will be different people of different standards in there, you know, workforce housing and, you know, people that work in Waikiki and such like that. But it, you know, that's, that's what we're, we're doing there. We will have.
It wouldn't be what you call transitional housing.
What?
It would, that particular building wouldn't be transitional housing.
No, we wouldn't. I wouldn't, I wouldn't, uh, label it.
Well, actually, just to be clear, we haven't ruled that out. So, um, I just want to be clear that we, we have not ruled that out and transitional may be part of it because it's part of a family assessment stabilization. So it is a work in progress. Um, there is ongoing discussions with the state to look at something like that, which would include permanent supportive housing. But I wouldn't rule it out at this point because we have been in talks with the state and there's been a huge need for it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room before we transition virtually? Okay, someone else on the board?
What is something that we as residents of our own community do to help, uh, homeless? Other than working and calling out for the um, people that work cases? What's the best thing we could do to help raise up our own?
Well, as, as I said, uh, it's, if you see activity that you think is, is public safety, call nine one one. Um, if you wanna call our service providers, when you see situations that need help, you can do that. Periodically, we're going to have fairs. We, we look, we, we didn't do it in McCully Field, but we were looking at it. If we do fairs, a health service where we bring in maybe, uh, showers and, and, and such, if you can embrace that, uh, you can come down and be part of it. Um, I think the biggest thing you can do is share your ideas and, and where we think we can really make progress, help us do that. Um, you know, the, that, that con- concept of NIMBYism, uh, really forces us. You know, that concept of NIMBYism really forces us to be in a situation where without that support, it's very difficult to do anything. So those would be a couple of comments there. I don't know if Denise has any additional comments.
Thank you Anton. So, and I'm sorry, I apologize, I can't see your name, board member. But I would like to say if there was really something that the boards could do and they recognize the problem, your support and a voice at the legislature, because it really is a partnership between the state and the city. I think it needs to be a coordinated effort between the two governments in terms of providing the programmatic dollars, the permanent supportive programming and the wraparound services really out of either DHS or Department of Health. The city can provide the facilities and that's how we go hand in hand. But there needs to be a greater voice and more support, I think, at the state legislature. They are beginning to formulate working groups around, specifically around permanent supportive housing, because there's a growing recognition that really permanent supportive housing is the answer to a lot of our homeless problems, especially with the wraparound services. Mental health services is another big area and that's what we're engaging with the Department of Health on. But those are the two areas, I think, if you really want to support, be a voice when it comes up for legislative session, because there are bills that are moving, there are appropriations. I know money's going to be tight this session with what's going on with Maui. And of course, we want to support Maui, but that's how you can support. Thank you very much for the request.
All right, is there more questions from residents in the room?
Allison Peterson again. Do you have any statistics on recidivism? Whether it's in a low-income housing or transitional housing?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand or hear the question clearly.
Do you have any statistics on recidivism? Like, once they have been placed in transitional housing or in whatever, affordable housing? Is there a percentage of people that go back into being homeless?
So that's a good question. I'm not sure if there are statistics on it, but I believe if anyone is collecting statistics, and Anton has been in this field longer than I have, but it would be Partners in Care, that they collect a lot of the data on homelessness.
Yeah, the issue with recidivism is it comes in a lot of flavors. I mean, we have, like, our homeless numbers are down and they were down 17% the year before, they're up 3%. But that's at the same time it's coming down, you have people coming into homelessness. They could have been homeless before, or they could be new to homeless, or they could be from out of our state. But in terms of people being housed and then not being able to stay housed, that's, there's a lot of reasons to that. I think the number you're talking about, though, when I looked at it, HMI's database, it was about 20%. Usually recidivism is used for prisoners, but, you know.
And I just wanted to.
Better term. Yeah.
I just want to comment that for low-income housing, there isn't a definitive time to get out for that. So the incentive is really to have more housing available so that folks can move up the ladder.
I think something that's also helped us, the city has done a very good job and Amy Asselby has done a great job in the Office of Economic Revitalization on rent and utility relief. And the amount of money and the percentage that we've gotten and distributed is one of the highest percentages in the country. And I think that that's helped people being kept housed, right, as they do that. And there's still some months available for that. So if people in this community that you hear and you're talking to need rent relief and they haven't applied for that, they should do that.
All right, moving over to the screen, Joanne.
So you said the count was down. I'm going to just say some things that, because I don't agree. First of all, we are not down. If you look around, it's worse than ever. Hawaii is probably the first, second, or third worst state to have a lot of homeless. And for a small island, we have a lot of homeless. I mean, going down from Kalakaua, you see it on Young Street, everywhere. And a lot of them are drug addicts and they become mentally ill. So I think it correlates together, drug addicts equally, they become mentally ill. They need to be off the street. For so many years, you have left them on the streets. And what I'm trying to, you want to put them in our backyard, I don't want them in our backyard because if they're not going to behave and they're going to trash the parks and everything and you want to put services in Makali, what is that, Moiliili, baseball field, forget it. No, that park is for us to use, not for homeless people to trash. It's been trashed for years. That has to stop. So I don't believe in, you know, all the programs that we have, I think that some of it is not like, well, I have to go on about this because this is a very important issue. Well, anyway, I'm just going to say this, you have to think about the residents in that area too. How the homeless has affected them, not only about the homeless, the residents themselves.
You're going to end it now.
We're not getting anything solved if we keep cutting people off. So what's your reply?
The statistics I gave you were the statistics I gave you. I think that Joanne, you know, she has one point of view, it hasn't changed in multiple years. And I think all we can do to address this is keep current and keep expanding the things to address many of the things that she wants to address. But you have to stay current with what we really see. And those were the counts and that's how I delivered them. I didn't do the counts.
You must be blind.
Thank you.
Yeah Anton, and I agree with Anton's sentiments. Thank you Anton.
Was there anyone else who had any questions? All right, thank you Anton and Denise for coming and for your presentation. Is there, if people want to follow up with you, where or how should they do that?
I'll put my email in the chat.
Okay.
And I think there's a liaison from the Neighborhood Board Commission under that has our contact info. Thank you.
All right, we are going to transition to our elected officials. Just a note that we have about half an hour left in this meeting. Since Senator Vuganaga decided to join us, would you like to start?
Thank you, board members. We recently sent out a newsletter and one of the areas in my news did pose a lot of questions concerning areas that people are concerned about involving homelessness. And of the roughly 300 responses that we received, I think one of the areas that people felt the most was they were very concerned about public safety. And second thing that was really, that people said that they would support permanent supportive housing, but they also wanted to see more services and programs could be provided for the people, their community. And we have been surveying, among other principles, areas, elementary and middle schools in the community. They have reported much higher levels, intrusions and concerns within their areas. So I think, I just want to thank the Makali Board for tackling this issue because it is really going to have to take the action. But we have worked together, legislature and the EVA area that director is through that resource center that will be providing additional services for those with mental health. So that's an important starting point as we have been pursuing this community. And so apart from that, this letter, what this month did talk about the budget that we have held in place. Because by now, give people a chance to talk with others from their community and see where they're. So not put on that tonight, but I emphasize that finding that there are a lot of resources that are becoming available, I think, for things like water ship restoration. President recently announced the American Constellation War, which is a way in which we can get more young people involved in forest restoration, water ship type of types of efforts. So we're going to be looking to see how we can build upon those with the community that are all there.
All right, does the board have any question? I don't know if there's any questions online. I don't see any in person. All right, any questions of our audience? All right, oh, Karen has a question. Thank you very much for coming to the meeting. All right, we will move on to the screen. Councilmember Say?
Thank you very much, Morgan. I'll be very brief. You have my report in the link. And I enjoyed tonight's two-hour discussion in regards to the homeless issue along with the border water supply, water rates, et cetera. You do have in the link my report as far as all the different concerns that have occurred from Algaroba Street for the homeless to the issues in regards to Young Street, where I went to a press conference by a group of micronation families that were being evicted, which I was a concern because if they're evicted, they go back on the streets. So that particular issue, I think the legislature should be addressing, and that would be the landlord-tenant code. But I truly believe, like I said to the board the past three years, it is a community issue whereby we all have to work together for the greater good. And I think at this particular point in time, we are trying our best, both at the state, county, and federal level. I recall a year and a half ago, two years, when they came before the board and that was the Holo project, if you folks recall, the old-time board members, that was at the stadium park. And then we also had Core that came out to some of our parks where the homeless were at. So in closing, thank you very much for a wonderful educational presentation tonight by those particular organizations and departments who made their presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, anyone on the board? Anyone virtually? All right, moving on to anyone in the audience. I'm not seeing anyone in the room. I have seen a couple of hands raised, but virtually, go ahead Joanne.
Hi Calvin, I've seen you a couple of times in regards to the same thing. I've been dealing with this over and over. But anyway, you know, the big problem is I think there's no law and order. I honestly believe that we have to have stricter laws. Just because you're homeless does not mean that you get to break the law. And that has been one of the issues that I have been pounding the mayor on because, and I think he agrees too. Just because you're homeless, you can't trash parks, you can't litter all over the place. I mean, this, we, if you're talking about living together, then they need to learn. Yeah, you're homeless, okay, we're trying to help you, but don't trash the whole neighborhood, parks. I mean, defecate in front of businesses. You think people are going to want to support you if you behave that way? So then if they're mentally ill, they need to be put away in an institution because they are causing problems to people who are trying to run a business, who are trying to go into the parks and so forth. So I think there has to be stricter law, less tolerance and stricter laws.
Thank you very much for your input, your thoughts.
All right, we have someone else saying, Kay Ishi?
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Say, could you please, hi. Could you please tell us what the status is of the Pahora Ridge approval process? Where is it in the approval process? Has it gone before the city council yet?
Kay, at this point in time, it is not before the city council and it is still with the Department of Planning and Permitting. I believe the Department of Transportation at the state level and the Department of Transportation Services are coming up with their recommendations. So at this point in time, very candidly and honestly, I don't know what the status is because they would have to wait till the report comes in and the recommendation from the two departments that are being, as far as affecting the project itself. Is that a fair statement? Because we did have a great meeting with the residents and the Department of Transportation at the state level and the city and county also in trying to address how we all can address the traffic conditions of the O'Wai Li Road and Koeli and Koali. Is that a fair response, Kay, at this point in time?
Yes, thank you, yes, because I'm really concerned because there was the accident where the pedestrian was hit, the 81-year-old person and was hit right in front of that, where that property is.
Yes, that was, was it two weeks ago or?
Yes, I think, yes, about three weeks ago.
Three weeks ago. And I did bring it up with my staff that they should have been aware of it. But more importantly, yesterday or last night, Ms. Koano and Mr. Shimakawa was at the hearing for the lower part of Manoa.
Oh, okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, we have a couple folks in the room that would like to share.
Karen Lynn.
Hi Karen.
Just a quick question during the discussion with Mayor's rep about, and I forget the acronym. It's the residential parking restrictions.
That's the reserve parking zones.
Right. RPZ.
Yes.
Anyway, did I understand correctly that Moiliili will be looked at after, that next in line?
Not that I know of. Nobody has brought that issue up with me because I'll be very honest with all of you, I voted no. Because my point of view is that it is privatization of public right-of-ways.
I agree, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you want to share?
Good to see you, sir.
Nice to see you.
Best wishes and thank you for your work. I see you're in a different capacity but always serving.
Thank you.
Best wishes with everyone as the holidays come and go. City and County, District Five, so you, does that include Makali, Moiliili?
Yes, Steven, let me just give you a fast background. I represent five house districts today. Uncle Calvin represents Palolo, St. Louis Heights, Kamiki, Kapojulu, Moiliili, Makali, Manoa, Makiki, Tanlis, and Alamoana, Kakako. The broad spectrum of society today.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, thank you so much for coming. Councilmember Say, good to see you.
Thank you very much, Morgan. Keep up the great work.
All right, take care. All right, Representative Garrett?
Hello, good evening, members. This is Melanie. I'm Representative Garrett's office manager. He's out of town on travel and he asked me to provide a very quick report just to mention that he is serving as a co-chair on the House Interim Working Group on Jobs and Business. And they've convened meetings with D-Bed, HTA, and Dr. Carl Bonham with you here. That was on, that was a few weeks ago to discuss the economic impact of the August 8th Maui wildfires and scheduled opening of West Maui tourism. There is a meeting scheduled with DLIR, the Department of Labor, to discuss unemployment situation and processing of claims for Maui. A draft report is due November 1st, which will include recommendations on 2024 legislation to support recovery. They plan to also hold public meetings to gather feedback and a final report is due December 15th. The Rep Garrett also wanted to mention the Hora Ridge Apartments Affordable Rental Housing Project. He also participated with Councilmember Say and Concerned Residents about the impacts of the project. And will be submitting a letter for public record for the project's 2021H application. And he will also highlight the traffic issues. That, and to please contact us with any ideas you have for bills for the upcoming 2024 legislature. Please feel free to give our office a call and I'd be happy to take. Please feel free to give our office a call, and I'd be happy to take back any questions to the representative. Thank you and have a good evening.
All right, any questions? All right, not seeing anyone on the board, not seeing one here in the room. All right, Kay Ishi, please go ahead with your question.
Yes, how do we get information on the meeting that you had about Pahora Ridge? Was that open to all residents?
Yes, Ms. Ishi, I believe they sent out some postcards to the surrounding residents. If you, did you get anything? If not, we'd be happy to contact you next time they plan a community meeting.
Okay, yes.
A website.
Because I got a, I got the latest postcard, but I didn't get anything about the meeting. I just got something that said it's unclear when this project will be before the Honolulu City Council for final approval, which got me worried because I thought, wow, is it at that stage of final approval? But hearing from Councilmembers say, saying, you know, it's before the DPP now and the DOT. But now I'm hearing it is that Rep. Garrett is also submitting a letter. It's also going to go before the, for 201H approval?
It's going to, I believe the letter is a comment period for the developer to submit concerns.
Okay, so.
So he is planning to submit a comment letter.
Yeah, because you know, I'm concerned with, just from experience with watching the Kui Le Place approval, where the DPP did not approve that project, but then because of the 201H, that is what got the Kui Le Place green-lighted. So 201H is a concern of mine, and so I was wondering what, where does Representative Garrett stand on on that? Like, would he be in support? Would, I guess what I'm trying to say is, is his letter going to help the push through this 201H or is it going to? Like, where does he stand on that?
I think he wanted to submit comments on the the concerns we've been receiving from constituents, which would, which would highlight the traffic issues on Old Wai Li Road. And I can definitely have him follow up with you on his position.
Okay, all right, thank you. I will contact your office. Okay, thank you.
Okay, goodbye.
Bye-bye.
All right, I'm not seeing any more questions. So, thank you, Melanie, for coming. I appreciate it. Representative Nishimoto? Not sure if anyone is here from their office. Go ahead and comment in the chat. We'll move on to Representative Tam.
Good evening. This is Laura from Representative Tam's office. I'm posting our October newsletter in the chat. Representative wanted to thank everyone who attended our town hall at the end of last month. Look forward for more community engagement events in the future. We are accepting and open and excited about any ideas you all have for legislation for this 2024 session. Priorities for us are noise, houselessness, mental health outreach, lots of things we've been discussing tonight. So please write to us, call us. Feel free to leave a message. And yeah, hopefully we'll hear from you.
Any questions here? I think so. Any questions on the screen? All right, thank you, Laura, for coming. All right, Senator Ihara?
Good evening. Can you hear me? We're, as you know, the legislature is in recess. The Senate is planning to go back in special session for a couple of days in November sometime to confirm and fill two vacancies on the Hawaii Spring Court. They've been vacant for a number of months now, about seven months, and so we've been looking forward to receiving the nominations and we go back in session. If we don't, the nominees become approved automatically. So we have always gone back into session and to vet the nominees and then to vote on them. I have, as some of you may know, been co-sponsored two meetings in September, community meetings. One was on the Alawai Bridge project that was held on September ninth at Alawai School. Basically, the community there, there's a hundred and fourteen people participated in the consensus process that resulted in, and I can tell you from my reading of it, is that eighty-two percent of the hundred and fourteen people who participated in this process, we had volunteers and staff there as well, but those who participated, eighty-two percent wanted to preserve the views of Diamond Head Trader, which meant that they were, they did not like the hundred and eighty-foot tower. Eighty-two percent also wanted to have a full environmental impact statement. The city had attempted, and it's, I think, still may attempt to have to stop and not have an environmental impact statement because if they claim, or if it's, if they're able to successfully claim that there are no environmental impacts by having the bridge, and then and so those are the major ones there. And then on September nineteenth, myself and a few other legislators, Senator Fukunaga and Senator Garrett and others, had co-sponsored a community meeting on the Alawai watershed and flood control project. And that went again in a few hours. The community, there were seventy-two people participated, came to a hundred percent consensus on having the Alawai watershed project, which is the flood control and the watershed, to include watershed restoration. And and then ninety-six percent of the participants favored highly to have, use an Ahupua' approach in land management, which it would be include collaborative decision-making and shared resources. So the exercise for those two meetings was to show that there were, there was consensus, community consensus on matters brought before these agencies by many individuals. So not only do we have many individuals who have stated a number of these matters, there, the community as a whole strongly agree. And so I think that, that is the accomplishment of those two meetings. I'd be happy to answer any of the questions.
Let's see if there's any questions. Anyone on the board? All right, and anyone on the board has their hand raised there? Okay, anyone here? See any other questions or hand raised? Thank you for all the updates. Thank you for organizing all of these meetings. Oh, there's one unique question. All right.
Thank you for that consensus gathering, I guess, for the community part, as I'm not necessarily a community member, but I wasn't able to make it to the bridge conversation. Oh, well, I'm a part-time right now, seasonal, but I wanted to thank you for that awesome circle up. I didn't participate in the exercises you guys had, but I'm hopeful I can participate in that sort of direct directly, but thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any hand raised? I thought I briefly saw a hand go up. All right, thank you so much, Senator, for coming.
I can, maybe I can mention a question asked by someone else earlier about Pahora Ridge.
Yes.
From my understanding is that the governor's emergency proclamation, the previous one, the first one, well, the last one, before it was revised, removed the city council as an approved, last approving agency for one oh four, one oh two H project, city, state projects. His revised emergency proclamation, my understanding, is that he's reinstated the various environmental and other requirements, as well as the requirement for the city council to approve 201H projects. So I believe that's true, and if that's, and if that's true, then the city council would be the last approving agencies for these 201H projects. Is that, maybe if Calvin's, Councilmember Say's here, maybe you can confirm that, but that's what I was told.
Councilmember Say, do you want to comment?
You know.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, it is true that it comes to the city primarily because the developer is asking the city and county for waivers of park dedication, waterline hookup, like Ernie Lau said, and other permits that they have to go through at the city level. Yes, so we have the final say as far as the city council. But before that, we can also influence the Department of Planning and Permitting that they comply with the request of our residents. And that's where we had this meeting at the request of the residents, Ms. Ko'ano, Mr. Shimokawa, and others, and even our board chairs were invited to attend the four different boards that were interested in it. So at this point in time, yeah, at the end of the day, for Ms. Ishi, it is the city and county, but at that point, the city council, excuse me.
Thank you, Councilmember Say. Sorry, I missed that meeting, and I appreciate your efforts to have the residents' concerns addressed. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you so much for coming, Senator Ihara. I think we are powered with questions here. We appreciate it. All right, Senator Moriwaki?
Aloha, everyone. Charles Izumoto on behalf of Senator Sharon Moriwaki. I just posted our report into the chat. We took a summer survey online, and it's not scientific, and it's not, you know, a few people participated, but it gives you a general idea of what people's concerns are. Mainly the gist is, you know, as you probably know, is homelessness, housing, crime, those are at the top of the list. Senator was happy to attend, you know, the Alawai Bridge meeting that Senator Ihara put on, and along with Senator Fukunaga, as well as the watershed, and she enjoyed hearing everyone's take on everything. And we'll consider all of that in the future. If you have any questions, let me know, and I can take it back to the senator. Thank you.
Thanks, Charles. All right, anyone on the board? Seen anyone on the board or online on the board, any residents? Okay, I don't think we have anything. Thank you, Charles.
Thank you.
I'm here. Oh, Joanne, did you have your hand up?
You see my hand?
Go ahead.
Okay, I just want to reiterate about when you guys get back into session, I think, I know Hawaii is a very liberal state, but I think the reason for homelessness and a lot of law and order, I mean, you can see on a lot on TikTok and YouTube, and I think this is true, all this kind of, what is this mob robberies and whatnot, and everybody gets away with all these, these things they're doing. And it's because the laws are so weak. We got a weak government right now. There was no law and order. Everybody's just, I mean, I the homeless are going into stores and stealing stuff. Right in front of my eyes, I see that when I'm in Hawaii. I'm in Texas too, so I can see that as well too. So nobody does anything. Do we want to have a country that has no law and order? I mean, laws that are kind of wishy-washy, they're not black and white, they're gray. And that's why I think we have a lot of the problems. Hopefully, hopefully, when you guys are in session, you'll make stricter laws. I really believe if you do, a lot of things might change.
Thanks, Joanne.
All right, thank you very much, Charles, for coming.
That won't happen, but.
We will now transition to resident and community comments. All right, this is the part where people have everyone has one minute to share their presentation.
I'll be real brief, because I know we're running late. But I just wanted to make a report about a meeting that Laura, Karen, and Wes, Winston Welch, the Outdoor Circle, was there online. This was with Roger Morton, the director of DTS, and Max Callhammer, who's the kind of in charge of the bridge project now that Meredith Soniat moved on. So we went to his very nice penthouse office and had the meeting with him, but I think it was a very productive meeting. He seemed you know, receptive that, that first of all, the project now is going to be a design-build project. And so whoever does the design is actually starting back at ground zero. They're not necessarily stuck on that hundred and eighty-foot tower. And so we showed him a video of a bridge in Banff, Canada, which he seemed very receptive to. And Laura has another meeting coming up. Maybe she can say some more about the meeting we had, and maybe Karen wants to comment, but Laura can talk about the other upcoming meeting.
I'd just like to say one thing that we emphasize at our different meetings is that we really like the name of a bridge called Kalaimoku. That's the street that's on the Waikiki side, because all the other three bridges are all named after the streets. We want to do that. We have another meeting that's going to come up with Mike Formby, the managing director, and he will be bringing some other folks to the canal edge. And we will be actually pointing out the things that, from the community point of view, are very important to us and how we really want to have all of our community resources and everything preserved.
All right, anyone in the room? Anyone? All right, Judy is going to go.
Good. That's why I love to look at it. Sorry. My mouth is loud and my voice is too. Sorry, I used to be on the radio. Anyway, I vote for John I vote, I do everything right, and sometimes you do.
Fifteen seconds.
Doing the right thing. I'm in the middle of Bill Seven. I've been working three years. I'm nowhere fat because I'm not a rich person.
Judy, we're timed.
Have real houses. Real high street trees all week. Exactly what we're doing. We found
Okay, we're timed. All right.
Too much money.
Go talk to Judy afterwards. All right, anyone else here? Anyone on the screen? Okay, we are going to go to the approval of minutes. Do I need someone to make a motion? Anyone want to make a motion on the board to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. Angie?
Angie, does anyone want to second her? All right.
Karen had brought up, there was a link, so this is just a friendly amendment, so you can just vote as is. It was just the link, the link to the mayor's rep, the governor's newsletter, thanks to the mayor's rep. So I'm gonna just change that on my end. But it's just a friendly amendment, if you guys want to prove it with a friendly amendment. But it's just a friendly amendment, if you guys want to prove it with a friendly amendment.
Angie, you need to approve it again?
I will approve the minutes with the revisions.
Thanks, Angie. Anyone want a second? All right, Chris is going to second. All right, let's go to housekeeping and announcements, so I can skip the first couple. Lolo broadcasts of this neighborhood board are in channel forty-nine on the following schedule, the third Friday of the month at nine PM, and second and fourth Sunday at three PM. Reminder that both YAD and pickups are by appointment only. To schedule an appointment, go to opala.org or call eight oh eight seven six eight thirty-two hundred. And a reminder that you can report neighborhood issues by going to honolulu.gov/csd/concern or via the Honolulu three one one app. Our next regular meeting will be on Thursday, November second. It will be here at seven o'clock. If you have an agenda presentation, if you want to serve on a committee, please email our chair, Paul Robati. His email address is paulrobati@yahoo.com. All right, right, to get a motion to adjourn? You are adjourned. Good night.
Good night, thank you, everyone.